Township Council, Porcipony Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, July 11th, 2023. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 21st, 2022, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 28th, 2023. Getting feedback, sir.
The mic is ready. I'll bring it up together here. Those two.
Okay.
Over there. Here you go.
Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays and also available for viewing at www.porcipony.net. Would you please join us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Khaled Rokol, please.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Mr. DePiro?
Here.
Mr. Musella has an excused absence. Mr. Neglia?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barbario, the Business Administrator Jamie Cryon, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, and Municipal Clerk Khaled Madden. Council President, we have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, February, excuse me, July 28th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. is our regular meeting.
July 25th.
July 25th, oh boy. August 8th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m., we have an agenda meeting. Presentations of reports. Mayor Barbario, please.
Just several things here. With regards to the Farmers Market, it's really, really doing really well. This is the fourth week, I think, that we just had. And we had one week, we had the concert, this, you know, the local band played, and that was awesome. Very, very good, people very receptive. And the Farmers Market, every week there, there's another food truck that comes onboard with regards to that, and so far residents are raving about it. Summer concert, our first summer concert is this Thursday. The band is overboard, the local band as well. Very good band, so that'll be the first one we have. Also, the Fourth of July fireworks was really, really well attended, over 10,000 participated in the fireworks, and the band really was, was actually very good. And it drew a really large crowd of, you know, they got, the band got everybody going, let's put it that way. And the fireworks, once again, spectacular. But next year, you know, we met with a few individuals and a few companies within this last month, and they're gonna try to help us to fund the fireworks going forward. There'll be several ones. I'm not gonna mention them until we get commitments and stuff like that. But I gotta tell you though, you should come to the Farmers Market, it's actually, I know you've all been there, I mean, most of yous, but it's a hit.
Mayor, could you comment on the Clean Communities?
Yeah, we have, you asked me a question prior to the meeting with regards to, we have a truck that goes around to keep Porcipony clean. That's part of our, I think it's part of our CDBG program, a grant that we get for clean communities. So we have, you know, part-time kids go clean sections of Porcipony.
I happened to see them on Monday. There were four teenagers.
Mm-hmm.
And they were on North Bevick Road.
Right.
And they were, I know we've had some concerns about Bevick Road, and it was, it was a pleasure to see the young men.
I'd also like to add, because I know there was questions, a resident came up last, the last meeting we had with regards to the roads in Porcipony, as you know, the budget in 2021, there was, it was cut down to $1.8 million through road repairs, and we need about $7 million a year for infrastructure repair, for maintaining our roads and stuff like that. So I will have a list of each council member here with regards to the roads and the, what ones we're gonna do in order like that. And as you know, North Bevick Road's another road that is gonna have to be eventually repaved and stuff like that. But we're pretty much waiting, because there's a lot of construction going on over there as well. But we have grant, another, I think another grant will be coming through the, what do you call it, Department of Transportation and stuff like that for the, you know, the new streetscape that we, you know, we discussed.
Thank you. Township Council, any comments, reports? Township Attorney, Mr. Lavery, please.
Yes, Council President. The only report I have is on the Mount Tabor Library lease. As council will recall, at the last meeting, we'd agreed to a 10-year lease, the association would take care of all maintenance, and we would, the township would pay $3,900 per year rent, per year for the 10-year period. Mr. O'Neill, the association's attorney, called me and said that there was a mistake that the association meant that they would only handle the maintenance for the failure of the major systems, which would be furnace, roof, foundation, that type of thing. So I think it was the council's understanding when we left the meeting two weeks ago that they were gonna handle all of the maintenance, so apparently that's not the case. So they will handle all the major systems, but they still want the $3,900 a year so that they can, you know, put that away in case the HVAC system goes, or the furnace or the roof or something else, so.
And for minor repairs?
Minor repairs, the township would be responsible.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's all.
That's, yeah, and if I can, if I can say, I mean, I think that was always the agreement that was in the past, that basically the town would have done. We would do all the minor repairs, but we would still pay the $3,900 a year. I have no issue with that. I think that, you know, you know, we wanna help out, but, and I get the, I get the concept of what they're trying to, so we give them $3,900 a year, so say after 10 years, that's 39,000. So if something major happens, they have the money right there and then to repair anything that's made, from AC to roofing and stuff like that. So I have no problem with that, we, you know, we, we can, I think we can handle it, so it's up to the council here.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'd be glad to make that motion.
Please.
Second. Motion by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Business Administrator, Mr. Cryon, please.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to quickly mention, we received a letter, the council and mayor received a letter from some residents over in Powder Mill about traffic safety. Just wanted to let you know, we're looking into it. There were some suggestions offered. I'm not sure if all of them are possible, but we will have our traffic division look into it.
Thank you. Township Clerk, Mr. Madden?
No report at this time, thank you.
Township Offices Committee Reports. I have from the Economic Development Committee. We are participating in two ribbon-cutting ceremonies. There will be a ribbon-cutting July 12th, tomorrow at 6:30 p.m., AFC Urgent Care, 1160 Route 46 West. July 15th at 10:00 a.m., we will have a ribbon-cutting, the Mailbox Store, 87B North Bevick Road in Lake Hiawatha. The public is invited. Look for the newly released Meet the Merchant featuring Gourmet Cafe. It is available on Cablevision, Public Access 21, as well as the township website, Porcipony Focus, and social media. The next meeting of the Economic Development Committee is Wednesday, August 6th at 6:30 p.m. All meetings are held at 90 East Halsey Road, Third Floor Conference Room. For additional information, please contact Frank Cahill at 973-559-6000. There's no correspondence. Bins were taken, 6:15:23, the Mount Tabor Phase 1 water main replacement. On 6:21:23, Brooklawn Water Tank Rehabilitation. There are no quotations, proposals, or qualifications. Like to entertain a motion to open the public session, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public on any topic. You have five minutes to speak. Thank you.
My name is Matt Kavanaugh. I'm the co-leader and founder of the Porcipony Green Team. Some of you know me because I've been working since 2019 on several initiatives. I'm also, have been in the energy industry for 20 years and the clean tech industry for 15 years. Currently, I'm a Chief Operating Officer of a clean tech environmental company. And if you're unfamiliar with the Sustainable Jersey Program, it's a statewide nonprofit program that certifies towns based on sustainable best practices. We made a lot of great progress under the town council before, achieving 200 points and finishing 20 actions. Now, in 2024, we're seeking continued support for the Sustainable Jersey Program so that we can get Silver Certification. That would put us in one of the top bins of towns in New Jersey. We have about 25 open actions that we were working on, and we've had a couple of meetings with the mayor, and we're asking for support to continue the initiatives. So some of these initiatives are major, that include the solar at the sewer plant. There's a grant that I wrote where we received $20,000 of grant money for a feasibility study there that could lead to a lot of savings on electric bills at the sewer plant. Additionally, we qualified for an energy savings improvement program, which allows us to upgrade all of our facilities with energy conservation measures to save on utility costs across all municipal buildings. And then electrifying our fleet will also save on gasoline costs over time, so these are worth Sustainable Jersey points, and we have come very far to get there. I consider these low-hanging fruits so that we can achieve this in 2024. And my simple request in this meeting is continued support so that we have a sustainable community like you always have, and Mayor Barbario, that we start that department meeting once a month for an hour so that we can continue to work on the various actions. But Porcipony is very close to getting Silver. It's a credential system that will differentiate the town and continue to represent us as a sustainable community, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm piggybacking on Matt Kavanaugh, my co-leader for the Green Team. In 2009, under Mayor Luther, mayors recognized the potential threats to infrastructure, their bottom line, and the need for action on extreme climate-related impacts, and that would only be for, by the local governments. Since then, I had stood here many times advocating for environmentally conscientious development and sustainable growth in Porcipony. I was pleased to be part of the new master plan that was approved in 2019, and to help reboot the Porcipony Green Team with the blessing of some of you on this council. Sustainable planning helps our environment while saving the township dollars, which translates into saving residents' dollars and protecting a quality of life that Porcipony residents enjoy. Now, the state and federal governments understand this urgency too, and opportunities to take advantage of credits and grants are available to local government. Sustainable Jersey Grants, ANJAC, and Highlands Council Networking and Grants are also available. The Porcipony Green Team has initiated actions that will provide cost-saving improvements to the town, but these are falling by the wayside by what seems to me to be an unwillingness of the town to seriously engage with the team, because it's been two years. For two years, we've asked to continue our volunteer, volunteer work. It's mostly Porcipony Green Team is mostly volunteers right now, and we've been stalled. All the momentum has been stalled. Work on infrastructure for reducing energy usage and for water and stormwater initiatives, areas that need real serious rethinking and retooling for the future have been stalled. Grants received by Porcipony Green Team for the town that have required extensions, as the work has not yet have been done, were requested by us, just to keep the, because the town has the money. We are leaving money on the table, a minimum maybe, $100,000, but could be more, of dollars yearly, dollars that benefit residents, the leadership, the infrastructure, and the environment. How is it that the largest municipality in Morris County can be lagging and embracing sustainable opportunities and not adjusting to the times? Because all, a lot of the towns around us are taking advantage of these monies that are available, and we could certainly use that in our town, just from the dollars and cents perspective, because this is 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ken Dolsky, 21 Winfield Drive. I just wanted to quickly say that I am here to support Matt and Judy as the co-leaders of the Green Team, and want to urge the town to work with the Green Team as much as possible. There's a lot of opportunity, and if you look at what's going on in the world today and you recognize the unbelievable rate at which, at which global warming and climate change is affecting everyone, everybody has to pay, everybody has to participate in efforts to reduce greenhouse gases. We have a great opportunity to do that with the sewer plant, and then there are other opportunities, and the only way that this world is gonna survive and combat climate change is that every individual, every municipality, every county, every state, and every country has to do its part in order, in order to finally reduce, stop the increase in greenhouse gases and reduce them to a point where we have a livable planet. So please help us develop new initiatives and especially work with, with the Green Team on the sewer plant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Marley Darcy, and I live on Roosevelt Avenue South. Several weeks ago, I spoke to Melissa Kuma about the Lake Hiawatha Hawaii Alki Library. She's the Labor Library Director for Porcipony. I asked her to tell yes or no if Porcipony is gonna new library. She said she had met with Porcipony officials, and the, the answer was probably no, because construction costs have gone much higher during the pandemic. Many maintenance issues should be addressed at the Lake Hiawatha Library. There is a parking lot directly across the library owned by Porcipony. The lights in the parking lot have been broken for approximately the year, a year. The lights have never been fixed. I believe this is a library issue, but also a safety issue. When one goes into the main entrance of the Lake Hiawatha Library, the paint is peeling from the wood and concrete, giving the lab, the library a shabby look. The roof has a leak, and you can see stains on the ceiling on the first floor due to the leak. Some of the interior lights do not work. Occasionally, the lights flicker. The electric panel should be evaluated by an electrician. The concrete ramp going into the library also needs maintenance. I feel this is not compliant with the American Disability Act. It is virtually impossible for a wheelchair to enter the library through the ramp. The library is a valuable asset to the community. The library does not just provide books. It has online programs, a seed library, ebooks, audiobooks, magazines, movie CDs, and programs for children. There is also a summer reading program for children. You can get papers notarized at the library, and you can get home delivery books if you're sick or disabled. You can reserve, reserve a library room for a meeting. I feel the town is ignoring the library. I last, I, I ask that the mayor and the town council address the many maintenance issues at the Lake Hiawatha Library.
Thank you, Ms. Darcy.
Can I respond to, Mr. Darcy?
Could I say one thing to the mayor?
Yes.
You know, I tried three times to get an appointment to see you, and they would never let me talk to you.
Well, that's not, that won't happen again, Mrs. Darcy.
All right.
All right, let's talk about the library real quick, because, no, I'm just gonna give a little overview with regards to the library. First and foremost, as you know, the library project came in at, well, when I wasn't the mayor, 6.5 million, I think it was $6.5 million. Well, as was described, and I've met with the director of the library several times with regards to this, to scale back, to get to the, to the 6.5 million. Well, as you know, now, it's, I think it's eight and a half million, due to cost escalating, due to, you know, pricing going up, due to the supply chain, and all that kind of stuff. The town does not have the money to put another $3 million bond up, it's that simple, and I, I can't, I can't, you know, describe that more, we just don't. But if the council wanted to approve additional bonding for $3 million, that's one way it can get done, but we don't have the funds. So, and they have to scale back, they gotta come and tell us what they can live with, and within that, three, $6 million, okay? Well, they really haven't come back much, so, that being said, to reduce it to a certain amount, there has to, there's certain criteria in order for them to keep the grant that they got. But they can't go below it, because then they wouldn't, from what I understand, they wouldn't, the grant money wouldn't be available for them. So we're trying to catch 22 here with regards to the library. As for the lights, I know there's, I think something happened to do, I spoke to the DPW Director today, to do with the hookup, which shows essential power and light. So that should be pretty much fixed pretty soon with regards to that. Sorry if I keep getting that puffin' in there, but the fact that I've met with them, I couldn't be any more candid with the library. We don't have the money to, to get the, what they really want, so they have to scale back, they gotta decide what they can live with. I get everything that Mrs. Darcy's saying, the handicap ramp, all that stuff, has to, you know, ramp has to be, has to be done. But, you know, we subsidize the library on a lot of stuff.
Yes.
A lot of stuff that we don't even have to subsidize them on, like health benefits and stuff like that. We're covering a lot of their costs, so if, if the council's interested in putting another bond up for $3 million at a rate of 6%, remember, when they got that first bond, it was a half a percent, the bond rating, I mean, the bond, the interest, now it's at 6%, 5, 6%, something like that. So those costs are gonna continue to go up, and I don't see anything happening in the future. Well, our bond rating's good, but the problem is, the bond companies are not just for Porcipony, and I don't even know if we're, if we're eligible to go through the county funding for the library. Now, we've had meetings with individuals who are willing to try to help out with the library in Lake Hiawatha, but at the end of the day, it's just gonna be fixes that we're gonna be able to do within that, that criteria of the $3 million. Now, the problem is, if they go below the scale with the, with the state gives them, they're not gonna get the grant money, from what I understand. So then, all the costs are gonna come on the township. Plus on top of, we give them by law.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello.
Hello. I'm already signed in. Oops. Is this, can you hear me okay? Yes. Joe, would you just fix that, please, Joe? Thank you. I just... All right, great. Thank you. Okay. All right, hi. Good evening, Mayor Barbario, Town Council, and residents of Porcipony. I'm not here to reiterate Matt and Judy's strong environmental background. Excuse me, may we have your names? Oh, Laura McCleskey, Lake Hiawatha. Thank you, Laura. Okay, sorry about that, okay. I'm not here to reiterate Matt and Judy's strong environmental background, both of which are extensive, because you know that. And I don't need to remind you of all the positive programs the Porcipony Green Team has already implemented. Again, you are aware of that. And I won't emphasize the importance of having an active citizen-run environmental group in the town the size of Porcipony. And I won't even go into detail about the master plan, which states that you should, and I quote, "Work towards sustainable Jersey certification." This is in the master plan. A program that was already started by the Green Team, that's on page 105. Raise public awareness with programs such as the importance of storm drain cleaning, a program already fully underway with the Porcipony Green Team, that's on page 102. Lead by example in promoting green infrastructure, is on page 102 of the master plan. Enhance tree preservation, page 101, and support and make solar energy efficiency a high priority, on page 105. All of these master plan recommendations are already being implemented by the Porcipony Green Team. In fact, the creation of the Green Team itself is a specific recommendation in the master plan. It's on page 101. What I would like to say is that your support of the programs of the Porcipony Green Team would be both environmentally and fiscally beneficial to the town. By improving recycling, we have less garbage, that saves money. By promoting clean, renewable energy, you're more energy efficient, that saves money. By promoting stormwater drain cleaning, that prevents flooding, that saves money. By monitoring fertilizers and road salts, we keep our lakes clean, that saves money. By preserving our natural resources, we increase biodiversity, make a healthier environment for our town, and we attract new home buyers, and that gives our residents money. By promoting climate change awareness, it helps prepare for stronger storms, hotter temperatures and droughts, and that saves money. By obtaining Sustainable Jersey Certification, it helps promote town-wide sustainability, and that saves money. So you already have a Green Team. It's an active, intelligent, and project-based asset to our town. I say, don't let this opportunity to benefit all residents of Porcipony, both fiscally and environmentally, pass through your fingers. I'd like to propose a Green Team resolution to make the Green Team a permanent and a part of the town council and mayor's initiatives, and it would be a legacy of yours to the future of Porcipony. It's time. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Bob Venedzia, and citing Daniel's Law as its reason, Porcipony no longer requires members of the public to provide their address when speaking at the public portion of a town council meeting. I believe that knowing the address of a speaker is critical in ensuring that Porcipony residents, rather than self-interested carpetbaggers, determine the policies that affect the township. Tonight, based on new evidence, I again ask the council to reinstate address as one of the requirements to speak at the public session. Since the last council meeting, I asked several other governing bodies what they require in order to speak at their meetings. I sent out four inquiries and got three replies, and Denville was the only non-responder. For anyone interested, our township clerk has copies of all the three replies that I got. The three responses that came from the Porcipony Board of Education, Mountain Lakes, and Montville Township Clerks were unanimous. Both name and address are still required to speak at their public meetings. So either these three entities have a different interpretation of what is required by Daniel's Law, or they found a way to continue requiring address while still complying with the law. Despite the mandates of Daniel's Law, the Porcipony Board of Education and the townships of Mountain Lake and Montville have found a way to protect their residents from undue outside influence. The Porcipony Town Council needs to do the same and reinstate address as a requirement to speak at our public meetings, and I can, I believe this can be done while still protecting the people that need to be protected by Daniel's Law. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Venedzia.
Can I address that, Council President?
Please.
So, I don't really measure what other towns do as to what the law is, because there's plenty of towns that do stuff that is unlawful or I don't agree with, but let me just read you from the legislative history of Daniel's Law. So this law, one, prohibits the disclosure by both governmental entities and private parties of the home addresses of any active, formerly active, or retired federal, state, county, or municipal judicial officer, prosecutor, or law enforcement officer. or municipal judicial officer, prosecutor, or law enforcement officer. The expansive definition of judicial officer includes judges of the OAL. Two, expands an existing crime concerning the disclosure of home addresses and unlisted phone numbers for active or retired law enforcement officers, to also cover formerly active law enforcement officers as well as active. And three, would permit criminal prosecutions and statutory civil actions concerning any prohibited disclosure. So, here's the problem. The law says that it's a crim, you're subject to criminal prosecution if you disclose somebody's home address. So, what happens is people sign up for this in Parsippany. Somebody from Moore's Plains comes in that's on that registry, that nobody here would know that, and then you disclose their, their home address. That's a problem. Now, I think, and let me just read you the rest of this, because it'll explain to the public why this came about. "The bill represents legislative action directly related to and intended to honor Daniel Andrell, the son of a federal judge who was shot and killed in July 2020 at the judge's family home by a person who had compiled, compiled a dossier of personal information about the judge, including the judge's home address. The bill's scope, as described above, would expand beyond just protecting federal and state judges, et cetera." So, that's the problem. So, if we're up here making people, and I understand why you want people's home addresses, totally understand that, but in the, in light of this law, I don't see how you can require people, especially if somebody comes from another town and you, you would have no way of knowing that they're on this registry. And then, not only is it a civil problem, it's a criminal problem. So, you can't, now listen, maybe the AG's office comes out with some guidance. I mean, they kinda just passed this law. And I think, as we spoke about at the last meeting, it creates a whole host of problems. One, if somebody's applying for a variance at the Land use board, they get their 200-foot list, you can't give them the home address of somebody that's on that list. So, now they're sending them to resident, you know? Is that the best way to do it? I don't know, but that's what most towns are doing. I think not asking for the home address of people, because we have no idea whether on that list or not, is the appropriate thing to do. And I think you're taking chances when you don't do that. And it's not because we don't want people to know where people are from. It's just, we've got this new state law that nobody's really dealt with before, and there's not a lot, a lot of guidance on. So, I think it makes a lot of sense to say, you can state your name, but we're not gonna ask for your home address.
I think you can protect them and at the same time, get everybody else's address.
Mr. Vinedzia, you've got all of the information from the attorney. We, we understand your position, and we thank you for coming.
Can I read, what, one?
You've had your five minutes, sir. You've had your five minutes. Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak?
Hi. Hi, I'm Bernie Clarkin. I'm not a carpetbagger. And, uh, I'd like to follow up on some of the Green Team, uh, discussion that has been had, and how it, how it might relate to some of the bonding issues. First of all, I do, I have come to review bonds that are issued by the town. And I found that back in late 2022, you authorized a thirty thousand dollar bond, in effect, as part of the sewer bond issue, to do the same solar energy study for the, uh, for the sewer treatment plant that Matt Kavanaugh talked about. That means it's been funded twice, and yet nothing has been done. And it's been quite a while now. So, I would question, one, why you issued the bond when you already had the money? And two, when are you gonna do the study? Another thing related to bonding is that back in December of 2022, the council authorized a general bond for, excuse me. It's a big bond. Uh, about eight million, one hundred thousand dollars. Included in that was 3.1 million for various trucks, vehicles, police cars. And as I review this, none of them look like they're electric vehicles. Places like New York City and Morristown are embracing this type of thing. Here we are, we're doing a lot of funding to buy new vehicles. The state and federal government are offering, offering us incentives to buy these things, and yet, unless I'm wrong, and tell me if I'm wrong, we're still buying gas driven, uh, gas guzzling vehicles to the tune of 3.1 million dollars. And I would like maybe some comment on that, those two issues. Thank you. And if you wanna jump in, Councilman Carifi, you're welcome to.
Mr. Clark. Good, you go first.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I don't know the exact nature of, of, uh, the vehicles that we're buying particularly.
All kinds.
All kinds. And we're right now in a market where it's tough to get any vehicles. Um, I could just tell you from my experience with prior municipalities where we had a mandate to, uh, uh, purchase electric vehicles or fuel-efficient hybrid vehicles. Um, that municipality actually put a stop to that, because there was a lot of issues with those fuel-efficient hybrid vehicles um, that wound up costing that municipality a lot more money.
What's that, in recent times, or?
Uh, that was in the last eight months in Cranford.
Okay.
Um, with the police vehicles. Uh, so, you know, I'm not saying that that's the situation here. Uh, I wasn't here for the 3.1 million dollar bond that you're, you're talking about. Um, but I can look into it for you.
Well, it may be too late, but maybe though all the vehicles are purchased. I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to comment?
Well, we did, remember that one grant we had, and, and the council, um, didn't approve it, because the electrical vehicle that we got grant for was almost double the price of the, of the, uh, the, I guess, what's it called? Diesel, uh, vehicle. And there was no cost savings to the township whatsoever. And I know we discussed it at the meeting with regards, until, until they can become cost-effective, which they're not right now for the township, especially trucks in particular. Um, so, until, until they become cost-effective, we'll, we'll look into it.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I didn't get an answer about...
Because then we have to, if, if this is gonna be a question back and forth, you know, that's fine.
I had a second question that didn't get answered.
And then we don't have charging stations. We don't have any of these things right now. Um, and, you know, just that alone's gonna cost us money.
I had two questions.
And we have to find, you know, you know, but, you know, that being said, we're gonna do, we're gonna do what's cost-effective for the township.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I didn't get an answer on the bonding for the sewer plant study.
We'll look into that.
Yeah.
I have your answer. Thank you.
And let me just say something about the sewer plant with regards. We, we, we've been down this road before with solars, solar paneling, and the, um, for the sewer, uh, and you, you remember Councilman DePiero. We did a study, and the sewer, and the sewer panels were gonna save the township, what? Approximately 11% in energy cost, um, over the course of time. So, what happened was, we decided to redo the plant, refurbish it, and we had such more of an energy-efficient savings than we would have with the solar paneling.
Don't really go into more detail. The, um, the proposal was to put, um, solar panels on Sharky's dump. The cost would have been eight million dollars, uh, and we would save 10% of our electric bill. At the time, the council turned that down, because if we upgrade the sewer treatment plant, which was a forty-some-odd-year-old plant, and very inefficient, and already manufactured discontinued for the last 15 years, it was far more efficient to upgrade the sewer treatment plant for 13 million and save 75% of our electric bill, then spend eight million for solar for a 10% reduction, and still have a 40-year-old plant that had to be dealt with. The, the common sense just wasn't there.
Anyone else would like to get up and speak? Thank you for taking your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Sean Astorga. I'm a Parsippany resident. Um, I attended the most recent Economic Development Committee meeting to better understand Parsippany's financial affairs. And alongside with the approval of our tax increases to support the various departments and services for the town, the meeting confirmed what I already know, and that is that new streams of tax revenue and new businesses in town will be highly beneficial. Some of my takeaways from the meeting were that there are a growing number of vacant dilapidated commercial properties in town. There aren't enough new businesses coming into town to fill these. Local businesses need more customers purchasing from them. Customer, current businesses like Home Goods and Marshals are moving from one commercial property to another in town, which essentially is, is a wash. And while I understand we are still playing catch-up from prior administrations and the pandemic, yearly tax increases and budget deficits have been a recent reality for, for us. Considering that New Jersey has sold nearly 550 million dollars in adult use and medical cannabis in 2022, and collected over 20 million dollars in revenue for the state, there's a huge opportunity here, and this is where our business, Happy Days Boutique, can come in and help Parsippany. Happy Days Boutique is a community-oriented business model, meaning that we have a five-pillar community care program, where a percentage of every sale goes directly to causes that benefit the community. Happy Days Boutique also provides solutions for some of the issues that I mentioned. There's a 2% revenue that goes directly to the town in the form of a municipal transfer tax. This is literally hundreds of thousands of dollars of tax revenue for Parsippany yearly, in addition to the community care program, which I, I just mentioned. Obviously, we will fill one of the vacant dilapidated commercial properties here in town, and we've already been approached by, uh, two property owners who are interested in having our company be a tenant. And we partner with local businesses to further drive local economic growth for everyone. We are already actively engaged with and participating in various nonprofit organizations, and we also volunteer at our local church, which are both in Parsippany. So, that lead-up is to essentially say that Happy Days Boutique would like to partner with the council in any way that we can to help Parsippany grow and thrive. And my question is, what is the best way to meet with the council and discuss avenues where we can be most helpful and effective with our time and our, our resources? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll answer for myself. I'm opposed to having dispensaries, marijuana dispensaries in Parsippany. I have no intention of changing that. But each council member will have to speak for themselves on that.
Uh, Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. Very briefly, if Councilman Mr. DiPiero, if you're against this gentleman's business, this boutique, you should also be against the vape shops. Talk about unhealthy, and I, I police litter in various places, and vape is like cigarette butts. It's a filthy, dirty, unhealthy habit that's allowed in this town and other towns. I'll leave it at that. Um, this planet right now, and this is a scientific fact, we are emitting more carbon into the atmosphere than nature is sequestering out. Therefore, the planet's in trouble. Therefore, the Green Team and people with this spectrum of consciousness are more, are very, very important, as important as a forest in our community, the thought waves. Uh, I recently sent a letter to Mayor Barberio. He said he didn't get it. That was on the 14th. It was about enforcing our tree ordinance, uh, in the, protecting migratory birds and being within 10 miles of the, uh, the bat, the hibernaclean. I've yet to hear anything. Um, Mr. Musella's on vacation. He sent me back a, uh, can you come up with an ordinance? I would like to come up with an ordinance, but I'd like to do it with the Environmental Committee and Mr. Musella, who is the liaison officer. So, therefore, uh, I believe you're, you have the power to initiate the Environmental Committee for a said purpose. So, I would ask your permission to look into this matter of, uh, encouraging, strengthening, and educating people as to why trees, you could take down up to five trees on your property, and the town, uh, won't say anything. But when these big developers come and everything, and it's happened in the past, they ignore, uh, the pine corks to protect the endangered bats and migratory birds. So, Mr. Mayor Barberio, I ask you permission to, uh, for the Environmental Committee to look into, um, and having, uh, part of the destruction removal of trees ordinance 392. So, it's, I would, uh, appreciate it very much if you would give the, uh, permission. And my final word would be, any issues of environmental integrity, or community, or ecological awareness, none, none of those things should be, uh, partisan. They should all be bipartisan, because they, they affect, they affect this law. So, I'll leave it at that. All right, thank you.
I'd like to respond with regards to Justin Musella. Councilman did reach out today with regards to an ordinance, and I'm, I'm definitely gonna think it over with regards to it. Um, uh, he did say what was looking into. I might not agree with it, but, um, I don't put forward ordinances. Uh, the council does. The council, you know, I could put forward an ordinance, but it would be up to the council if they want one. And my power is if I don't agree with it, I would veto it. Um, so, you know, if, if Councilman Musella, who's on the Environmental Committee, wants to bring that forward, that, that, he can bring it forward. Um, and I will speak to members of the Environmental Committee. I know they have a meeting tomorrow night, uh, which, you know, I only found out through Justin Musella that there was a meeting tomorrow night with regards to that. Um, I don't know what the criteria is that the Environmental Committee is looking at. I, I know you've mentioned with regards to not cutting trees down from April to November. Um, so, these are the things that I have to look and decide if, uh, the town wants to take that step. Um, because, you know, I, I don't wanna tell a resident, you know, they can't cut a tree down. They can cut them all down in November. It's just, uh, you know, it's just, and that's, and that's just some of what I, I was told. So, I will meet, and I will speak to the Environmental Committee.
I can clarify, because it's not, what you're saying is not, uh, correct, so I...
Well, that's what, that's what, that's what was relayed to me. That, that would be the ordinance. And, uh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Suarez.
Richard Suarez.
Before I get on to the subject I wanted to speak about, talking about trees. I called the forestry department last year, and we all know there's been an infestation of some sort of a beetle that's been wreaking havoc with all of the trees in town. I mean, you drive around, you see it. And I asked if there was a, a, a survey, or if a list was made on which trees needed to be done, you know, needed to be taken down for, you know, safety sake. We were very lucky this past winter. We had no snow, no ice, and we didn't lose a, a lot of limbs that could have taken down, power lines, cars, et cetera. Uh, so, I'd like to know is, is there such, such a list? And what priority is given to the trees that need to be taken down? And I'll let you work that out. That was something that I called about last year. I never heard back from anyone. Okay? Not a word. Uh, I was up here a couple of times. You're probably getting tired of me talking about the lights over at the Lake Hiawatha Library. I'm happy to report that I called JCPN L. And, um, the lights should be on in about two weeks. What baffles me is how an ordinary citizen that has no standing with JCPN L was able to get their, you know, give them a heads up, and they're working on it.
Sir, were you, were you here at the beginning of the meeting?
No, sir.
The mayor talked about that. He responded to a resident and mentioned that he had spoken to them, and a light situation was being taken care of.
Yeah. I've, I, I, more than one phone call, but I finally got in touch with the, um, line foreman supervisor. And they've done some work there. They have to put the meter back in, in, into the box. If the lights that you presently have there, which are high-pressure sodiums, are not functioning, you can't get parts for those, and you're gonna have to do, you know, an, an upgrade to an LED fixture, which will be more, it'll give you more, more light for less money. But there is an upfront cost of, you know, getting the lights changed. At a couple of meetings ago, mayor said, "Safety is number one. Let's get some safety going in that parking lot here." All right? Um, also, a couple of other things. I know the library or the city, I'm not sure which, was given some sort of a grant for either refurbishing or replacing the Lake Hiawatha branch. And I know that you originally got three million, but after COVID and everything, the prices of everything went up, and that's not the cost now. My question is, that grant money from... My question is, that grant money from Trenton, is that going to have a date where Trenton is going to say, you didn't use it, you're going to lose it?
I'll let you finish and--
Okay. And, and, and I know this, this isn't yours, but a couple, right after COVID, money was plentiful. And I know that New Jersey and various towns, almost all of them, received money to upgrade the HVAC systems in all of the schools. Now, I had called the Board of Ed several years ago because during the summer months, every air conditioner in every school runs 24 hours a day. Let's think about what that costs, all right? They don't even close, close the shades to keep the sun out. They had a report done by an environmental scientist, a guy by the name of Richard Bell. We, we, we used him in the past where I used to work, bright guy. He said to keep the rooms at 77. The insurance carrier said, no, he wants 72. Now, does anybody here keep their house at 72? Because I know if, if, if I tried that, my wife would beat me. Okay? Okay? I mean, nobody does, does that. Why are we trying to, to maintain an artificially low temperature? And in his report, it, it even said, keeping it too low can cause mold more, more frequently than if you keep it at a temperature of 77. I had his, his report. It's in the house somewhere, but I can't find it. But he, he made it clear, they don't need to keep it that low. And for Pete's sake, at least close the blinds so you're not getting all this heat load.
I think that what you've just recently said is a topic if you go to the Board of Education.
Right.
We have no control over the Board of Education.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm cognizant of that, but did, do you know if they received any, any funding for the HVAC upgrades?
I have no, that, that would be, that would probably be the American rescue plan. They got money with regards to infrastructure and stuff like that.
Right. So, so you have no hand in that?
No. We're autonomous from them.
Then let's go up. Thank you. Mayor, would you like to respond to some of his questions?
Now, you asked the question with regards to the library. Is there a possibility that the grant money has a timeframe? It does. It does have a timeframe, and not just that, they can get extensions of library with regards to that timeframe. And I, and I'm going to reiterate what I said in the beginning with regards to the library. The cost came in at 6.5 million originally. Now it's way up there. In order for this library to be done the way they want it to be done 100%, you know, state-of-the-art, you'd have to put an additional $3 million of bonding in. We already bonded, we already matched the grant, the $3 million grant.
Okay.
We matched, we did a $3 million bond. We have to do another $3 million bond, which, which I don't think the town, and it would be up to the council to do, do another bond. So they're going to have to scale back at the library and figure out what is going to work and where we can have much better, you know, facility for the residents in Lake Hiawatha. But to spend, we don't have the money to spend the $9.5 million.
Was, was any of that $3 million spent on the Mount Tabor Library?
No.
No, no, that, we, we funded the library through operating, which is 80, I think, $81,000, and then stuff like that. We just made an agreement tonight with the Camp Meeting Association.
Huh?
Eighty-five, yeah, so, whatever it is, it is, but it's in that, that area. So basically, we're subsidizing the library. We subsidize them almost $360,000 for health benefits, $81,000 for Tabor. So, you know, I guess they don't have the money to operate the library at 100% where the, where we wouldn't have to put any additional funds in. So that's, so let's get back to Lake Hiawatha Library. I've been very candid with them. I've been very, you know, upfront with them. You're going to have to scale back, but here's the problem they're going to have, and if I'm wrong, the BA will let me know, that if they scale back too much and it doesn't hit the percentages, they'll lose the grant as well. So in order for them to get that grant money, they have to make a certain amount of repairs or a certain amount of upgrade to be eligible for that grant money.
Right, but, but, but once you spend X, X amount of, of percent on, on an upgrade, then, then that puts you where you have to meet all the current buil, buil, building codes. ADA, fire, blah, 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 blah. That's going to, trust me, I worked at a place who renovated a building. I told them, don't, don't, don't do it. It costs the more to renovate it than if they just knocked it down and started from scratch.
That's what this proposal was. It was pre-pandemic--
Right.
The cost to tear down that building, build a new one across the street in the parking lot--
Correct. Where the lights are, or where the lights aren't.
It was going to cost $6 million. $3 million was a grant, and $3 million we committed--
Correct.
--to fund that. Post-pandemic, that cost went up by another $3 million. It's now around close to $9 million. And discussions that I had with some library board members, directors, I told them, if they, and they knew this, if they tear down the old building, which has lots and lots of problems, we put--
Yeah.
--millions over the years into that building, and it's still--
Yeah, well, you know--
--not good.
It, it, it was renovated in 1992. A lot's changed since then.
We went through it many, we went through it many times.
Yeah, Joe Weisberg was mayor then.
Yeah, and he's also, he was also on the library board. None of that would, would suffice. If they tore down the existing building and built a new building, the $9 million would come down to $8 million. If they treated it, built it to be a satellite library and not all the bells and whistles that the main library has, they could cut out another million. Fewer books, smaller, fewer conference rooms, you know, maybe fewer services, they could save another million. But they didn't come forward with any, looking into any of those suggestions to try to cut down the $9 million to something less. They haven't done that.
Well, that, that library now is pretty much bare bones.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Suarez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five minutes is up.
Anyone else would like to come up to speak?
Seeing no one.
See no one. We have a motion, please.
Make a motion.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Carrif, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Carrif.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Ordnances. Second reading and public hearing, ordinance number 2023:09, an ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills adopting the 20-30 Lanox Plaza West redevelopment plan. Non-consent agenda? Mr. DePiero.
Are we voting on that?
Yes. That's being voted on, and non-consent is being voted on. Nothing else will be voted on, and will be up for review.
Resolution 2023-103, an emergency agreement with FSC leak detection for Route 46 near South Edwards Road Water Main Break. This is the second break. Motion to approve the resolution above by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Carrif.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consent agenda? Gentlemen, would you please review? Do you have any questions on the resolutions? Approval of payroll and bills?
Approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment, authorized payment of the July 7, 2023. Regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,800,000. And number two, payment of bills from voucher list 7123 through 7323 is $1,059,274.40. Motion to approve the authorization of payment above made by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Carrif, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Carrif.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn the meeting by myself. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Carrif. Roll call, Mr. Carrif.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Have a good night, everyone.